This is a good thing.
Yeah.
I've never had to worry about looking tall.
Lifts, maybe.
Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, February 5, 2019, and today we are here to review our policies, chapters four and five. I have spent several hours with Dr. Kingsley, and Dr. Kingsley, I think, has spent several hours with Art Hardy, our attorney. And so we're prepared to go through these and discuss them, and I will turn it over to you, Dr. Kingsley.
And actually, I will turn it over for Art to start, because much of the policy review is statute updates, so take it away.
All right. Well, this is, hopefully, our last policy workshop, at least for some time, as these are the last two chapters that we've yet to go through together.
May I point something out that I forgot to say?
Of course.
Shirley Brown is not with us this afternoon. She's on a plane somewhere between here and Chicago. I'm not sure that she will make it back for the board meeting. And Eric Robinson has some complications to his schedule today, so it may just be the three of us.
Okay. We'll start at the beginning here, chapter four, and like we've done, we haven't done it for a few months, but how we've done it before that seems to have worked well, is I'll just work through by number. The changes are shown in red. If anyone has any questions, comments, changes, stop me. If I don't hear any, I'll just keep moving us along so we can, hopefully, get through both of these chapters in the time allotted.
And I might add that our Mrs. Zucker, who loves to review and edit for syntax and other changes, will provide a copy so that we make sure that we have all those things.
That's what I was just going to say. You don't want me to stop.
Happily taken care of, yes.
Yeah, if you just want to give me your grammatical changes, when we're done, I'll make sure they get incorporated.
Will do.
All right. So starting with 4.10, which is entitled "The Curriculum." I don't think there are really a lot of substantial changes here, just some verbiage changes. 4.11, "Student Progression Plan."
I just wanted to ask what the changes, sometimes I know they're statutory, and I know we reference the statute, so this one had a lot of changes in it, but was it cleaned up plus statute, or was there any functional change?
I'm looking it over quickly here.
It was both cleaned up and the statute change is the last.
Yeah, so.
That's the last, the last part about, you know, as, for many of these, they haven't been changed for a while, and in the intervening time, there have been a lot more either mandates or just good practice to put things on website. So a lot of, a lot of that is what's incorporated here about different ways to notify. This one doesn't specifically talk about that, but I know that's some of the changes. The substantive change there is the last provision, which was a statutory change, which is Roman numeral six. 4.113.
It's also statute.
I think it's, yeah, a lot of cleanup and, I think it's mostly cleanup kind of changes there. Okay. 4.117, titled "Early High School Graduation," I think that was also primarily language and the removal of the specific amount of credits and just tying it to the graduation requirements that are in statute. 4.12.
And the last, in section five there, Roman numeral five, it said, "And appropriate for the student's disability." I didn't think we used the word disability.
We did, no?
I think that's the, I mean, we're still, it's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
Yeah.
I think, I think the word that has been changed is, in some contexts at least, handicapped to disabled. Is that?
Yes.
Yeah, you do. You don't, okay.
4.13, just removing a rule that doesn't exist anymore. 4.14.
Changing the name.
Yeah, it's nomenclature. 4.16, no change there.
4.17.
4.17, no, no change there. 4.18.
This we did change based on our superintendent's goal, and we have completed a plan for children by grade eight, where they're headed next.
I believe we had some conversations about this previously, and I don't, and I know that we changed already formally our challenge policy. These are related, different, but related, but I believe we've previously talked about the adoption policy, and that's bringing this back to you is formally.
Okay, so that was my question, and I refresh my memory, did we ever, because the adoption dates on here are not current to the statutory change that was to, so we held off on changing?
My recollection.
I know we talked about it.
Yes, we did talk about, we talked about several of these policies, and I believe that the one that got officially changed last year was, I think it was 4.30?
Challenged.
Challenged material, setting up that, you know, if someone was challenging, what do we do about it? So we've got that in place. In fact, well, in fact, yeah, here it is. 4.30 is just ahead, and that shows a revision date of 12/12/17. So, yeah, I think we talked about the block of policies about instructional materials, 4.21, 4.22. I don't remember if we talked about 4.23, that one's sale of textbooks, and 4.30. And 4.30, we kind of took out of order so that we had a challenged policy.
Got it.
A challenged policy.
That's right, okay.
And we did that.
And I do have a question on 4.21, Jane, if that's all. Roman numeral three, we strike principal and change to manager of instructional materials. And I believe, again, going back, trying to remember, I know that we had talked about what the process was, and I don't think anyone has, as of yet, actually taken that option where a principal, a specific school would choose a different, I mean, remember, Rob was here, we talked about those options. So that's changing that, correct? So that's no longer on the table? They would always be centralized? I just want to be clear. That's officially changing a policy?
I know we had a, do you want to come up and address it? Because we did kind of a flow chart procedurally.
Anyway, we got.
Oh.
Here, so you have a mic.
You can be Mrs. Brown.
So I, at the time.
At the time of the original conversation, I know we had discussed the fact that the state provides us with two options.
Right.
One being that a district can separate themselves from the state process of adoption and undertake the whole process themselves from start to finish, of which there's only one district.
Marion.
Marion has done that. They don't, the state doesn't provide us with an option to then parse that down, I guess, for lack of a better term, down to individual schools conducting their own adoptions, which is how our language was stated, that it gave the principal the opportunity to essentially hold an adoption at the school level versus us doing it at the district level.
But we're not going to do that.
Well, then, before, our policy was such that it did allow a little bit of that autonomy, but I remember the discussion, I don't know if anyone was taking advantage of it, and I think there was supplemental doc, instructional material that was done. There was some flexibility with the supplemental items, I think I'm using ME as an example. Is that still eligible, where they have some flexibility, it's just not the main textbooks?
Yes, there's always flexibility with budget for principals and schools to select supplemental instructional materials that best meet the needs of their teachers and students.
Okay.
But as a district, when it comes to the core, that's what we, the core.
Okay. But that's a change here that wasn't there. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else on 4.21? Okay. 4.22, not very, not very much of a change there. 4.23, I believe those changes are to comply with statutory language. And 4.30 is what you all approved back in December of 2017, and there are no changes to that.
So can we just mention that 4.31, the community speakers, we have pulled that, and hopefully, we will be back in front of you in April, and the reason being, Todd requested that we look deeper into our procedures before we complete our policy and provide you with some updates on policy, and in doing that, we found a lot of gaps. So it was a really great question that he asked, and the gaps, I think we'll be able to correct when our Office of Community Involvement has a website upgrade, and that's going to happen in March, and our Safe and Orderly Schools Committee that handles presentations like those that we had some issue with in the past, the more, the topics that we want to be very, very precise in how those are handled. They are going to work very closely with the Office of Community Involvement in our process. So anyone who wants to be a community speaker will go through the Office of Community Involvement, and that previously had not happened, and when they, they fill out their documentation, if they notice that, notify us that there are topics that are going to be updated in here, that may be, how shall I say, not touchy topics, but they could be sensitive and controversial, yes. If there are those topics, then those folks will be routed to the Safe and Orderly Schools Committee to go through their extensive process, and then, if approved, they'll be routed back to the Office of Community Involvement where they will be, they will go through the typical procedure for screening. So we feel really good about the loopholes that Todd asked us to, you know, make sure we're not there. We feel really good about closing those loopholes on the changes to come, so that will be to you in likely April or early May. Good?
I think that's great, because I have seen a great degree of people doing all kinds of things and asking for all kinds of things, not going through some protocols, so I think this is great.
Good question, Todd.
All right. 4.40, extracurricular program. Again, there's some minor changes, but that was just to make sure we were in compliance with the statute. School choice to include athletic choice is underway. Always want to plug that.
So, school say that? Come up, Katrina.
Always want to give you a chance to plug.
Oh, okay.
And we never, we talk about school choice, I want to make sure we talk about athletic choice.
So athletic choice?
Typically, athletic choice will fall right behind the regular school choice, which is going to end on March 4. So either a few weeks before, a few weeks after that date, it will start. I don't have the exact dates. Jim Slaton works to establish the dates for school, for athletic school choice, but it is coming up.
And you will be, complete that on the 4th of March, and then you'll look over these, and you'll get back to parents during April, is that correct?
That is correct.
Because I always get that question. I had a text late last night from someone saying, "If I'm using school choice now, do I have to reapply?"
No, they don't.
No, you don't.
Good answer. Parents will be notified April 8, no later than April 8. My goal is maybe to have it that first week of April, but by April 8, everyone should be notified.
But it's not July that we want to hear from them. We want to hear from them now, if they're interested in school choice. Please, now. Because I always feel somebody, or several people who get in touch with me in July and say, "Can I?" And I go, "What?" Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 4.41 had a significant rewrite, and I think this was done simply to try to make things more clear and to put the appropriate policy into place.
Responsibility where it belongs.
4.42, no changes recommended there. 4.43, just nomenclature change, title change. 4.431, just added the line at the end of Roman numeral one to make clear what the policy is, that there has to be signed permission for administration of medication, and this is specifically about field trips. 4.44, that's just some cleanup language. I didn't think it was particularly clear before, so just making sure we've articulated what is not allowed. 4.45, no substantive change, cleaning up a policy site, and then also making clear under the last heading about release time that it's for students in whatever grade, not restricted to high school. 4.46 is new. That's why it's all underlined, and that is directly related to the statute that was passed last year by the legislature.
Do you have five?
Have we?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Change in, in one is, again, to make clear that there's someone who has to be, some adult who has to be approved by the principal to serve as a sponsor or an advisor to each 4.51 is a cleanup of, and rewriting of the student publications policy. I think this puts us in compliance with the law and was certainly vetted by the academic folks.
And it's easily understood, I think.
Yes.
This is, I think this is truly kind of cleanup language here, no substantive, big substantive 4.61, no change recommended. 4.65, on virtual instruction, added some language to show some other options for meeting course requirements. Nothing removed, just some things added there. 4.70, on home education. I think this was designed to both make sure we were in compliance with statute and also to make it more clear.
Katrina spent a long time on the next few policies.
4.72, and this is substantially revised. Again, this is participation of home, school, and private school students in extracurricular activities, and this is also largely driven by statute. And finally, 4.80, no changes suggested to the short policy. Like those short policies. All right. With the exception of what I'm going to get from Mrs. Zucker to do some grammatical cleanup, does anybody have anything else they want to talk about or ask questions about on chapter four?
Did anyone, did you get any questions from any other board members that may not be here?
I did not.
And I guess the answer to that is, good job and no.
All right. There are a lot of, there are a lot of policies, yeah, and, you know, for the public, we just went through this all very quickly, but there's a lot here, there's a lot here.
We've been looking at this for four months.
Staff, staff did a lot of work.
You've done a lot of work.
Dr. Kingsley and the folks who are sitting here did a lot of work, and I know you, Mrs. Goodwin, and Dr. Kingsley spent a lot of time looking through it, too, so. We are moving quickly, but that's not because, that probably is because people have spent a lot of time before we got here. So, all right, moving to chapter five. 5.10. Yeah, the change here on mental health is a statutory change. I think that was just to give some flexibility and also to be compliant with, with our various procedures.
Just a quick comment, just to go on record publicly. From time to time, I get inquiries in regards to the immigration status of our students and regards to the number of students within our system and their immigration status. As you look at these two policies, number one, there's nothing here in which we're collecting that information. As a matter of fact, we are specifically prohibited from collecting that information under a consent decree that the state entered into, and so that is a question that comes up from time to time, particularly in regards to the national climate, that people want to know, how many students do you have that are undocumented? How much money is expended on those students? And that is not a data element as a school district that we collect or are permitted to collect. And I just want to go on record there as we look at those two policies.
5.12, no change to the policy. Changes, a lot of nomenclature changes, though, really, more than substantive changes. Some, some changes such as was raised earlier, removing the old outdated language of mental retardation and putting in intellectual disability, for example, and talking about reasonable accommodation.
And no vautic.
Substitutions. And no vauti, right.
And so, within the body of that policy, we have changed vocational to career and technical. Is it our intent to do that in the title also?
That makes, that makes sense, doesn't it?
We all missed it. No changes to the next one.
Okay. 5.14, it's a long one, but no changes to it. Actually, this was revised back in September of 2017, so it was fairly recently updated. 5.15, similar, recently updated. 5.16, the only change is the addition to comply with statute and to make clear the rights of dependence of military personnel.
And the next one Katrina worked really hard on, and also, most of it is in statute, so she pretty much, I know it's long, but, and we asked her to edit it, but it wasn't really editable because it's pretty laid out like that in statute, it's pretty clear. Very long.
So that is a long one. Does anybody have any questions, or is? Moving on to 5.201. And this is a new one. That is, that was proposed by the EMCS, the group that we use. 5.201, it's student out of zone transfer slash choice.
5.20.
Of course.
And on page 704.
That'll be changed.
Pardon me?
So, well, 704 will be changed when we, yeah.
Yes. I knew it as I was saying, I'm like, what the hell am I saying?
And, all right, and where are you?
Third.
Okay, Roman numeral three.
It's R.
Oh, R, okay, yes.
Students may not enroll in a regular high school if they cannot earn the number of required credits to graduate by their 20th birthday. I thought it was 22. I know 22 is special needs, but why is it 20? Somebody has to explain it to me. If you go into high school on 18, there's no way you're going to get out by the time of 20.
Well, it's our hope that they begin high school at, I gotta do the math, 14, and so typically what happens is it's students who are re-entering the system. And so you'll remember, we made a change to our pupil progression plan to allow principals the flexibility that when they meet with students to determine if they would best be served at a traditional high school or through our adult high school program. And so this is providing some guidance there in regards to that.
I have a problem with this, and it's probably, it's probably statute, but I have a problem with this, because there are kids that want to come back and they're not able to. And I know that we have another program, Accelerated Academies, that they can go to, but some of them want to come back into a regular high school and be part of a regular high school, and I really am upset over the fact that we can't allow them to come back.
If we didn't have a lot of options for them, Caroline, you know, think about the 22-year-old with the 14-year-old. If we did not have other options for those children, I mean, we, we work with every single child. If a child wants to get a diploma, we will work with them and get them in a program that best serves their needs. We want every child to have a diploma. So I promise you, there isn't a child we won't work with to try to get them their diploma, but it may not be that the setting is high school for a 22-year-old with our 14-year-olds.
I would point out, that's not a change. That doesn't mean it's right or wrong. I'm just saying that, that is the current policy as well.
I know, I don't have to like it, though.
No, no, absolutely.
Is it statutory? Do we know?
Sonia's coming up.
I can hear.
It's not statute, but it goes back to the high school, high school requirements for completion of a high school diploma. So based on our high school credit requirements, it takes a student, a traditional student four years to complete a high school diploma. When we receive students who are 18 or 19 with zero credits or one or two credits, it takes them to complete 25, 26 credits or even an 18-credit diploma. They would not be able in a traditional high school to achieve that. So that's when we have to look at the possibilities of connecting resources to help that student achieve the goal of earning a high school diploma, but it's not going to be the traditional way, because the- way because, I believe, it's statute. It says 20 for a Gen Ed student to re-enter a high school. So, it has to be based on statute and earning...
20 to re-enter our high school?
No, no. By the age of 20, if you enter as 18, you must, by the age of 20, you must have completed the requirements to earn a high school diploma for a Gen Ed student. And like Laura said, many times, our students come to us with zero credits, or a minimum of one or two credits, so we have to provide other opportunities where they can earn a high school diploma, but it's not going to be in a traditional high school. Has to do with the state requirements of completion, whether even if we put them on an 18 diploma track, you have to look at, how can we best meet their needs? In a high school, a traditional high school is not going to, based on the schedule, is not going to help them accomplish that goal.
With everything I do, I always believe that it's not seat time that counts, it's learning time.
Correct. And what Laura, Dr. Kingsley mentioned, too, for students like come to us with barriers that they have faced, then we come to a meeting and we look at very different ways, and through school choice, we're able to connect them with resources and assist them in earning a high school diploma or different choices. But we do our best to help that child or help that family when they come to us with zero credits at the age of 18 or 19, sometimes they arrive to us.
Does this happen very often?
We might have one or two a year, like that.
But that's one or two. That could have three or four children, which will impact four or five generations. That's where I'm coming from. Okay, I hear you. Thank you.
It has to be about credits, but we do our best to connect them. We really do.
Anything else on that one?
No, but all the numbers have to be changed.
The page numbers, yeah.
Yeah, the page numbers, yes. Yes. Okay. 5.201. And as I said, this was a new policy that was sent to us by EMCS, the company that works with us on policies. And this was their proposal, which I think everyone that reviewed it and the staff side was okay with.
I'm sorry, could we go back, please?
Oh, of course.
To page 4 of 9.
Which policy?
The last one.
5.20?
No, the one before that.
5.20?
Yep.
Okay. What portion?
5, the last page.
Okay.
It says, "The Board by its own discretion may extend the option," this is transportation, "shall not automatically entitle the student to district transportation. When considering attendance boundaries adjustments, the Board by its own discretion may extend the option to other students with more than one year remaining." Are we doing that?
This is when we're changing boundaries for schools, so we haven't done that a lot. But when we do, I know that we let students...
Grandfather.
Grandfather in. I don't recall...
It's transportation now.
Yeah.
I believe that, I believe that it has, but I could, I would defer.
When I was at Fruitville and we rezoned to Tatum, I think that's the latest one. We allowed families to continue to come to Fruitville and provide transportation, and if they wanted to go to Tatum, they provided transportation. So, the grandfathered-in had transportation.
This essentially gives you the right to do that. So, if we have a situation in which we're changing boundaries, this policy will allow you to extend transportation for longer than that one year if you choose. It doesn't obligate you to do so, but it gives you that option.
Flexibility.
If we open a new school and have to draw attendance boundaries, or we adjust attendance boundaries, so there's no obligation here, but there certainly gives you that option.
I just want to check on it because of the talk about not providing transportation in some instances, so...
Okay. Do we have anything else on 5.20? 5.201, anything on that? 5.202, you recently amended in November of 2017, and we don't have any proposed changes to that. 5.23.
Again, she worked really hard.
It's more, more choice.
Yeah. To make sure it complied with the statute.
This is also to make sure we're in compliance with statutes on transfers. 5.30, no substantive changes.
Caroline's edits.
I noticed that.
What? I'm sorry, what?
Capital S versus A.
I think this was a change I'm suggesting, just to clean up the search language.
Okay, that was my question.
And then, under Roman numeral 7, to also make clear that parking on campus is a privilege, not a right, and with it comes some obligations.
Can I go to, excuse me, Roman numeral 4, just the use of metal detectors? I don't, I'm not suggesting a change. I just had a question of, do we actually have any metal detectors in our inventory?
Yes, we do. We have handheld wands at our disposal.
Okay.
And we use those regularly at the VPAC for performances.
Okay.
Interesting what people try to bring into a performance.
Oh, boy. Good to know.
The only change there is the addition to the last, the addition of the last paragraph, making clear that there can be an assignment to a second chance school for continuing I don't think that's any real, no real substantive change there. This is mostly trying to clean up the language.
I, I'm sorry. Three, we passed it, but 5.32 on the zero tolerance for school-related crimes. It's been a while since I believe we even talked about the student code of conduct, but does this line up with our student code of conduct? I know that there are a lot of times questions of the flexibility. I mean, we do restorative justice, we have a whole slew of different things. These are pretty serious crimes that I don't know if they fall outside of restorative justice, certainly not the first 10. But our student code of conduct, does it align up with this?
Yes, most of the changes in the recent year have been in regards to interventions, not the classification of offense.
Okay.
And can I just make a comment? Another charge that our superintendent gave us is, when we're finished with the whole manual, is to go back and pull out all of our procedures and guidelines and, you know, handbooks that go home to families and make sure everything is aligned. So, that's the next step.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And then, as soon as we finish that, we'll have new statutes.
That's exactly right.
From this pledge section. And I think by then, Bridget, you'll be well enough that you can start looking through those, and you can be the keeper of the keep when it comes to policy.
I want you guys to know.
I know you like to do that.
I do. I'm a policy nerd.
And the changes here are to, I think, to streamline and certainly in compliance with the statute that is on the same subject. 5.34.
No change.
Yes, no change recommended there. 5.343, also no change to the policy itself, recommended. I think this is mostly kind of clarification, putting in here. And also adding people recognizing that there is a pickup list in addition to people with whom a child or a student resides. Referencing the policy we talked about earlier about the privilege of parking on campus. Adding some language about the dress codes that I think came from people in the schools.
Yeah. Good add.
And maybe our chair, board chair, might have had something to do with that.
It's a good addition.
Just saying.
I like it.
5.371, are changes based on statute. Clarifying what students were talking about there, the ones who have been issued badges.
All right, let me give some information before we get into 5.38, because there was some bit of information that was requested at the last discussion about the electronic devices policy. So, I wanted to make sure you knew, Joe Benzwinger let us know that as far as devices to students at elementary school, we provide 90% of our student enrollment with devices. So, it's nearly one-to-one. At middle school, 80%, but in addition to that, not included in that 80% is the technology in our tech-active labs. At high school, it's 90% of our enrollment. So, there are, I can say with confidence, enough school board devices that we can support our children with classroom activities should they not have personal devices at middle school or high school. I just wanted to make that clear before we get into it. As far as textbooks, the question came up, and we have at middle school and high school digital textbooks that in many cases are provided. We also have a hard copy in every classroom. Middle school, Rob said we're shooting for 30 additional copies of that textbook in the, or 30 copies in the classroom, 35 in high school. And then, there are one, at least one set, or we're moving to two sets in the media centers so that children could check out up to 60 textbooks. If there is a need at a particular school that a textbook is being checked out and they need additional over the 60, then our wonderful instructional management person is aware, becomes aware of that and orders additional. So, there's never a question about if children want textbooks, hard copy, can they have access to those? During the school day, they have classroom sets of those textbooks.
But they should not be taking heavy, heavy bags in their book pack, back and forth to school every day, which many of them still do that.
Yeah, and our pediatricians have really warned us against that, you know, with the prevalence of scoliosis and et cetera. I also want to say, as you may have looked at this, to be clear, elementary, we did not survey our teachers. Last thing I want to do is go asking every 100% of our teachers another question in a survey. But here's what our principals have said. Chris made clear that elementary teachers, principals were fine with having no personal devices used in elementary school whatsoever, allowing teachers to use the digital devices that we provide. Were there random teachers at elementary school that utilized this? Yes. And Chris's response was, that was typically because they thought that the district was moving to bring your own device, they wanted to prepare the children for middle school. So, not going to be an issue at elementary school, except perhaps randomly, but I think the principals will be able to accommodate those teachers who were using, allowing children to use their personal devices. At middle school and high school, you see there that the principals wanted to allow the flexibility for a teacher who had activities, to allow students to bring their own device, and always have the option of having district devices in the classroom where it's a seamless, you have your own device, or you use one of these devices from the classroom, so that there is no calling out of a child doesn't have a cellphone or an iPad in the classroom. It's a seamless, you have an option of using one or the other. So, that's where we came to with the middle school and high school. So, if a teacher is against using cellphones or personal devices in the classroom, this policy covers it. If a teacher is really adamant about the projects that they can do, that the children want to do using their personal devices, this policy covers that. So, that's all I was going to say.
I know that this is something you will have talked about. It's not frankly so much a legal issue as it is purely a policy issue, so...
But what we have a problem with mainly is that people weren't following the policy that we have in effect. And it bothers me because I go out to schools and I go, ah, why are you, you know, why do I see fifth graders sitting with a phone like I have here, which I shouldn't even have it, I don't usually have it. But why do I see fifth graders in the media center, and I see out of the 10, 10 of them, five of them have phones, like me, or an adult? And that bothers me. So, the more gray we put into this policy, the more easy it is for them to do whatever they want. And teachers have told us, why is it our business? They need to do what they want to do, or they feel is the right thing to do in their classroom. Caroline, did you have something to add?
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say. This is a no-win, whether you ban cellphones or you don't ban cellphones, it's a no-win. Because based on the feedback that I'm getting from teachers and parents, some want them to be able to have them, and some don't. Some teachers want to use them and don't. And what somebody said made sense. For those teachers who don't want their students to use cellphones, then lock them up, put them in their backpack, and put them in the closet. And those who want to use them, use them. Because this is a no-win situation. No matter which way we would go on this policy, or you would not win, someone will still be complaining.
Parents are texting kids in school all through the day, and they don't have to. And I know that there's this issue of, well, if there was an emergency, I have to know if my kid is okay. I get that. But these aren't emergencies most of the time, and...
You're going to retrain our parents?
Well, I don't know that we're going to win that one either. But my point is, I think no elementary is the answer. No elementary student using cellphone, period, end of story. I don't care if it's PBIS or PDQ. It's just, it's not necessary for little minds and little brains at that age. I think limited in middle and high school has more flexibility. But when we put this in here about principals may allow PBIS incentives, then here's where we get into the gray again.
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
So, there's only three of us here. What I would recommend, and I'm going to ask Bridget to speak, because Bridget's spoken in the community and had a lot of input on this as well, my reaction is I think we ought to pull this one.
Okay.
And discuss it at the next workshop, when we have five people here. What do you think, Dr. Bowden?
We have quite the full agenda at our next workshop.
I know we do.
But if you want to come in at 7, we can add...
We can start at 7. No, we can do that, but I think, I would rather have... No, we can do that, but I think, I would rather have dialogue with all of us here. I mean, I don't think that without Shirley and Eric, I think we really need to pull it and discuss it.
But in regards to timing.
Yes.
Certainly this, once we settle on a policy, is going to require communication with our families. And I really think that we've talked to our principals. They're committed to rededicating themselves that once a policy is decided upon, that we're consistent across the board. And so the best time to do that is as we're starting the school year. And so, you know, there is not an urgency, so be it March or April, as long as we make a decision, that will give us time that this policy would be in place for the 1920 school year.
Perfect.
Can I add two comments about this? We also talked extensively about not calling this a cellphone policy because you all love to hear this.
The basis.
We have watches and coming out, according to Joe, are rings that.
Sunglasses.
Yes, so we defined it as those that receive and send electronic signal or store digital data instead of just cellphone.
I agree.
And I also just want to be clear that we're not saying elementary students in this policy can't have their cellphone, but it must be off and away because we've heard from many parents that, you know, they often ping their children to find out where they are after school and before school. So that was part of what we landed on there, that off and away.
I tried to send you all something, but I don't think that it ever went through. For some reason, it got held up. But I was watching the news one night on PBS and they had a device that's a pouch. And some schools have gotten so restricted because they, and they had to because kids were not abiding. And you put it in a pouch and you can't open that pouch. It's the same kind of electronic thing that you'd see on clothing in a retail store that they have to take that off before you can take your item home. And it's that same kind. A friend of mine went to a concert in Las Vegas and they put his phone in pouch. Everybody in the audience did not have a phone at a Bruno Mars concert. And I'd be okay with that at Bruno Mars. It wouldn't bother me at all. But at any rate, concert goers are experiencing this kind of technology as well. And then when you go in the lobby, as you go out, you just pass it over something and it pops open and you give the pouch back and, you know, take your phone home. But somebody said it was a really better concert experience without the phones, flashing lights and, you know, doing things that they weren't supposed to do and whatnot. So that is one alternative that I don't want us to have to go, you know, down that road. But I think I just see so many kids that are just not engaged in being present. And that's what I'm concerned about is being present.
I agree with you, except I know.
Yeah.
I'm going to push back on you a little bit because I've done a lot of research and there are other school districts across the state who they're policymakers who, again, were elected by our community and what we stand on. So if they don't like it, we have an opportunity to not be reelected, but to stand and create policy. And so I would just challenge any of us on any topic that you don't want to just say, oh, we can't do it. I mean, we're going to be faced with always challenging circumstances and we have to be confident enough that we can put in place policies that make sense, no matter what the topic is. Let me, if I can, please. So, but, so I agree, I would like to pull it. I always suggest if we did any kind of significant change or anything, that it should probably be implemented for the next school year. I think that makes the most sense. If you look back while it wasn't scientific, my concern is that I did get, all of us got a lot of feedback from teachers and the vast majority was whether they use it in class or not, or whether they had the classroom management skills to say, pull it out. It was a major issue, a major distraction. And what also further to that was that they didn't have the support from a discipline standpoint. So that's where I have a question from the principals is the inconsistency and then the support they have from administration, whether this is accurate or not, but that, I mean, this is the feedback we get. So is it worth the fight if by the time they say, Johnny, you've got to leave and drop this off, or whatever their chosen discipline is, they did not feel that they had that support from the administration? And I think that's a really important component because if you don't have that, of course, they're not going to try to enforce it anymore. Why bother? So I think as the board, we figure out what that balance is because if we look at the current policy, I'd actually be okay with it if it was actually being adhered to, right? So I'm very pleased to see elementary move. And two things that I wanted to clear up because I've heard from parents too, and it's interesting, I've had really some colorful debates that, you know, texting kids during school is not really respectful to the teachers and to everything else unless there's an emergency. I certainly believe that you can go to the central, I mean, to the school and let them know that you need to connect with your child. You don't need to share what the emergency is. I just, that really shocked me. And so there may be some work, we would need to try to work with our community and our parents to understand how the, you know, there is a negative impact at this and that would work together in hopes that we could understand that the culture and environment is so that they can focus on their learning and their education. And but that's why I wanted to talk about the security component because that's what was used nine times out of 10. I'm concerned about in the event there's a lockdown, in the event there's an active shooter, that what, if they don't have a cellphone on them, will that impact it? So I don't know if we have any ability to talk from a security standpoint when we do pull this because that was by far and large the biggest concern from families. And I would agree with that. I share that concern myself before we move forward. And the other part is just that the consistency was a big issue. And I think Jane makes a great point about, you know, principals may allow personal devices as a positive behavior intervention support incentive. That's, I think you'll start to lose that. It's Johnny says, one teacher allows this, but I don't have it now. And then they just don't have that support. And I was really pleased with the very candid feedback. It wasn't that they knew I wanted this, I shouldn't say banned, restriction is a much better word, I've realized, so. But they were very candid about what works and what doesn't work. And it was all, you know, various components of, I want to trust our teachers too, but when they ask, they would like some support here. I believe that's worth us listening to. So if we pull it, I would ask, could we move it to April? Because I don't know what's going to be happening in March, so.
Would you happen to have some issues?
But again, I think it would make sense for it to be implemented at the next school year. And the security piece still is just one area I have a concern with and.
I think that's a good point.
You know, so that's, that's all I have for that.
I think, I think that's a good point. And I also think that it's something we need to review maybe every year.
Yeah.
It's a policy that maybe we need to look at every year.
Well, technology changes.
Technology changes and things of that type. But I keep hearing from principals, with dress code and with cellphones, I have to pick my battles.
I like the additional dress.
And this is not the one I'm going to pick. And I always say, ooh, okay. But, you know, I think this is an important one because in schools that have restricted phones substantially, the kids are more engaged with each other.
I will send you a white paper that says equated to an additional week of instructional time for the students. That's huge. And not to mention, I mean, so there's a lot, and these are, the challenges that I recognize, it's not apples to apples, these are smaller districts. So Florida's just, we're at a disadvantage because we have enormous districts, whereas Illinois, Massachusetts, et cetera, I mean, they're smaller, they're much easier to manage. I do recognize that. But the benefits have been, have been very positive in other areas and they were able to do it. And students thought the sky was falling and perhaps parents did too, but after a month or so, there was almost a level of refreshing. I'll send you the NPR, I don't know what channel, what the show was, but it was very enlightening. But it showed a lot of, you had a lot of students talk about how, man, I didn't realize how much I utilize that phone until it was forced to not be around me. And I think we owe it to our kids to give them that chance. So that's the end of my statement.
Caroline? Anybody else?
We're in agreement. We'll put it on the April workshop agenda, the regularly scheduled.
But in the meantime, we'll go, we'll be proceeding with the rest of chapter five.
With the exception of this chapter.
Right.
All right, 5.381. No change suggested there. 5.39. We changed the end to beginning there. Fees must be approved yearly at a school board meeting prior to the beginning of the school year. Seemed logical. 5.40. No real change there other than some nomenclature. 5.50. Some minor changes. 5.56. Largely nomenclature changes. And consent is always required, so I didn't, that last sentence was removed because I think was redundant. 5.60. Say mostly, again, nomenclature, kind of cleanup changes.
Question on 5.56.
Okay.
I read the statute, I was reading statute the other day. And I know as it pertains to, I guess it's 5.56 Roman numeral three, at the beginning of each year, this is statute, this is pulled directly from statute, at the beginning of each year, this principal shall inform the parents to find in writing that students will receive specific health services provided by the health services plan to allow them to exempt because there's, that's the option. The parents have to exempt themselves. It's not that there's, it's not the other way around. They can't opt in. Do we send, so every, at the beginning of every school year, we send out something to parents? And what format is that? Do you know?
This is for children with health plans.
The state mandated screenings, the vision, the hearing.
Come up front, please.
So per statute, on, yes?
Yep, it's on.
K136 get vision. K1 and 6 have hearing screens. We do height, weight, body mass index in 1, 3, 6, and 9, and scoliosis in 6. So schools and families are notified of the dates of their screenings and when the teams will be in to do that. And we do get some opt-outs, but for the most part, I mean, these are good things.
Yeah, and does that kind of come with the same, because there's a couple other services, you know, sex ed is one of them, but there's other testing elements that I think, whether we offer or not, are we, we're providing this to parents at the beginning of the year with kind of a series of, is it separated?
Yeah, they actually get the little brochure that says, this is what school looks like.
Okay.
And it goes home every year. Registars get the latest and greatest if we have any changes. So they get that and then they also get individual communications saying, our date is December 11, 1213.
Okay. Okay, that was my, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Thank goodness.
5.61. No substantive changes. 5.62. Changes there, all medications are stored. There wasn't a distinction between prescription and non-prescription. 5.63. The paragraphs that are stricken at the end of that were stricken, I think, just because they were redundant to what are in our other policies already. 5.64. Just taking out the name of the statute and referring generically to Florida statutes. 5.70. Putting in, just kind of cleaning it up, putting in FERPA, just making it clear it's, but there's both state and federal laws. 5.71. No change proposed to directory information. 5.711. Changes here and the change that we're recommending is simply to mandate what is already frankly required by statute, which is that parents get, have the right to access to information as stated in state and federal law.
Jane, I have a question. And I don't know, I cannot think of the name of the federal act and it pertains to digital information. It's like OPPCA. I have no idea what it stands for. Do you know what?
I do, I can't.
People always think of FERPA from records and from information, but there's this particular federal statute which is about, because we're using so much digital textbooks, we're utilizing, I read, we're utilizing a number of different, there's a whole concern about data information of sharing. And the way the Federal Trade Commission looks at it is sometimes the burden's really much more on the school district versus the vendor. I don't think we have a policy, this is much more in-depth, it's not something we can just like skate over, but I didn't see it addressed in any of this.
I don't know that we have a particular policy on that. Certainly this policy does not cover that.
Right, okay.
This is getting, this is basically telling parents what their rights are to access student information. What I believe you're referring to is a statute that limits the ability, it's really not on us, it's on digital service provider, websites and such, preventing them from collecting information.
Correct.
From minors.
Under the age of like 14.
14, right.
So, but there, but the more, I'll send it over because I was concerned that it puts us, a burden more on us. And I've just seen a lot of people in the community talk about that concern. And so I just want to make sure we know with our service agreements and know, as long as our service agreements are compliant with what we as a board would agree with.
And that's where, that's where we try to address them when we're dealing with online, whether it's online testing or those kinds of providers for not even high school students so much, but younger students. And the burden is on them to comply.
Okay.
And we need to make sure that they do because we're not the target, if you will, of that law, subject of that law. It's the online providers. But it is, it is a tricky area.
Okay.
Is it addressed in our contracts with them?
It frequently is addressed in contracts. I'm not aware that it's addressed in statute anywhere, or in policy, rather. Yeah. 5.72. Just changing there to show that names can be changed with court orders or amended birth certificates. 5.73. No requested, or no suggested change. 5.80. No suggested change to that policy. And then 5.90. Having to do with foreign exchange students. I believe this is another one that Ms. Ward was dealing with. And I think this is also just to clarify and to be consistent with statute on that.
We had some issues with this, with people's understanding a couple years ago.
With that?
With that? We're at the end. Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Thank you, Dr. Kingsley.
Good job, guys. Thank you, thank you.
And so we'll move along with four and five with the exception of the electronics student.
Correct.
Cellphone slash electronic device.
And the community speakers.
Yes.
So other than that, when I get Mrs. Zucker's changes, I will incorporate those. The one, the one change I wrote down was the one that Dr. Bowden noticed in the title of that one. I'll make that change and then get them all with the exception of the two that are, have been deferred. I'll get those over to Ms. Tompkins and she can get them on whatever, then by the time we get that done, the next agenda after that for advertising purposes.
Great. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Good job.
Thank you.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you all.
Thanks. We are now adjourned from our workshop meeting this afternoon. We will re-adjourn at 6:30 for our school board meeting. And we have a swearing-in of a police officer even as we speak.